Welcome to this meeting of the Dunedin City Council. Welcome to my council colleagues, to staff, to the media and to the public. Our prayer today is going to be led by Reverend Sir Sifu Polley of the Dunedin Methodist Parish. Welcome Reverend.
Before I say a prayer, Mr. Polley, I agree with the readings from members of the Dunedin Methodist Parish. In all our expectation, God bless your meeting, your deliberation today. Let us pray. Praise the loving God, create and sustain after the universe our hope. We approach you with thanksgiving for all the goodness and blessings that you have bestowed on each and every one of us. We give you thanks for the goodness that we see upon our city, the city of Dunedin and its people. For all businesses and families who are taking advantage of the goodness and blessings that we have seen in this city. For the joy and peace that our young ones experience every day. Most importantly, we give you thanks for the work of the members of the City Council. We give you thanks for the mayor and his deputy for their leadership. We're all aware of the task that has been given to these people, are sometimes too difficult to comprehend and too complicated to handle. We ask your guidance and wisdom in their decision-making and deliberation. May it all be for the common good and the well-being of all people. May they disadvantage in the marginalized field they are dared and valued in the process of their deliberation. Bless the mayor and his deputy, as well as all the members of the City Council in the works they do for the benefit and welfare of our city. In time of hardship, may you be the stronghold. In time of disasters, may you be the helper. In time of challenges, may you be the refuge. Continue our gods to bless the city of Dunedin, so that all people who enter it feel welcome and safe. Bless all families, so that this city will continue to be a blessing for the generations to come. We ask all this in name of Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
Well, as usual councillors, we start with public forum. And our first speaker, can I invite Sue Rhodes, the President of the Atago Motel Association, to express some concerns about unregistered accommodation.
Sit down. Good afternoon Mayor, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Sue Rhodes, I'm President of the Atago Motel Association and I'm here representing our 51 members. We would like to bring to the council's attention the continuing growth of unregulated private letting accommodation in the city and its surroundings. The short-term residential accommodation industry is booming all over New Zealand. And with more and more property owners listing their properties on Airbnb, Bookabatch, Holiday Homes and a myriad of other online booking sites. There are so many properties now advertising on Airbnb that they have opened an office in Auckland to manage them all. Motel owners and operators in the Dunedin district are very keen that the council should start taking notice of this activity. Particularly as it is set to rise with investors now moving away from overheated areas like Auckland and Queenstown and looking closely at Dunedin. Currently, there are approximately 300 Airbnb properties, up to 250 holiday homes and 133 Bookabatch listings, to name just three websites. Action needs to be taken to control the knock-on effect of this type of accommodation. Firstly, there is the consequential loss of houses and apartments for long-term rent. Secondly, if more properties are being sold to investors, then supply and demand dictates that house prices will begin to rise. Thirdly, the owners of these properties are flying under the radar, not complying with the many regulations imposed upon commercial accommodation. They fail to register as commercial operators, therefore not paying commercial general rates or water rates. They do not have to pay for rubbish collection and in many cases do not provide adequate parking facilities. Other potential non-compliance includes health and safety, fire regulations and inspections, commercial insurance which includes public liability. What happens in the event of an accident. Finally, our biggest bone of contention is the number of properties that have not changed their classification for the principal use of their building. There are a number of instances that the members of our association are aware of where large residential houses have been split into multiple units with kitchens, but still only pay one residential rate. Motels provide a continuity of accommodation throughout the year. This supports the city by offering accommodation to visitors for the hospital, university, many corporate bodies and of course the stadium. Other councils around New Zealand are beginning to pick up the baton on this issue and each is coming up with its own solutions. Sitting and waiting is not an option, our motels are under threat as commercially viable operations. We would ask council to consider some solutions to this problem. Initially, these properties should be disclosed. A search on the many online websites will reveal a list of properties that can then be cross-matched against the rates database. The owners can then be targeted and asked to register for either residential, mixed use or commercial use, with a heavy penalty for non-disclosure. Any property owner charging a nightly tariff should be subject to registration regardless of the number of nights they are offering accommodation per annum. On registration, there should be a list of basic criteria which must be met regarding health and safety, fire exits and signage, insurance and liability and the availability of access units for the disabled. Another solution for consideration would be to impose a levy on properties through the online provider. This is then directly related to the occupancy of the building. This is working in other countries with Airbnb who have said they are willing to work with local government. Motels are synonymous with reasonably priced, good quality accommodation in New Zealand and are quite unique throughout the world. Please don't let the arrival of these new types of accommodation undermine our businesses by doing nothing. Whilst the association applauds the diversity of accommodation on offer for the tourists, surely it should be offered on a level playing field. And three examples of properties that are flying under the radar. 526 George Street, described as a boutique motel, general rates for 2018 set at $5,043, water rates nil. It has 14 bedrooms, 14 bathrooms. Compare this to Apartment Sinclair, one of our members, which has two more bedrooms, one less bathroom. Their rates for 2018 are $18,500 and their water rates are $2,000 per annum. 99 Muscleborough Rise, this is known as Dunedin Boutique Home Stays. It's a five-bedroomed house of which four bedrooms are sold on the open market. They take cash only and they charge a $10 city tax, which I bet council doesn't receive. They have no off-street parking and pay one residential rate and have their rubbish collected. 51 Shetland Street, which consists of two two-storey dwellings on one site. The original resource consent was for each dwelling was to contain four bedrooms. In fact, there are now 12 units being run commercially. The rates were reviewed in 2016 and are now commercial. But the point is that it was built in 2010 under the guise of being residential, so no appropriate development contribution has been paid. No WAF with associated annual costs, no metered water, no commercial building code expenses, no charge for rubbish collection and no car parking. The operation has proved so lucrative, the owners have expanded their operation across the road. These are three examples of what's going on in Dunedin and there are plenty more. And for your interest, I am in receipt of correspondence from Mackenzie District Council, which clearly defines their recent new legislation which comes into play on 1st of July for letting properties in their district. And this will be emailed to you today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rhodes. Would you be happy to take questions? Questions, councillor Benson-Pope.
Thank you, Mrs. Rhodes, Rhodes for the alert and the three examples, which we'll have a look at shortly. But I'm wondering, I know anecdotally I've heard that this is clearly a New Zealand-wide problem, there are 2,000 Airbnb listings in Queenstown alone. Do you have any idea, and obviously you're asking for us to research that, do you have any idea of the scale of the issue in Dunedin?
Well, as I said, on Airbnb, I gave you a quote there, didn't I? 300 that we found. And it depends on what time of year you look as well, you know, so if you go onto Airbnb and you just look at the calendar for the summer months, it just pops up and they're popping up all the time.
Councillor Van der Wiss.
Thank you very much for your very informative forum. You've said that motels provide continuity for accommodation in the city. And I'm sure we all very much appreciate that and the service that that provides. However, you've also alluded to the fact that there's a lot more accommodation required in the summer. And there are times, Ed Sheeran would be an obvious example coming up, where there's an enormous amount of accommodation required that motels simply can't possibly provide. How would you suggest we as a council go about ensuring that visitors are still able to come to Dunedin at times when we have accommodation far in excess of what the motels can provide?
Well, I'm not saying these places should be shut down because clearly there is a need for them. And that's why they're there and that's why they've popped up because, you know, accommodation is short in Dunedin if anything. All we're saying is, can we all please work from a level playing field? So that certainly, I mean, somebody who's got a sleep out or, you know, a studio or they're letting a bedroom, that's not really the issue. The issue is with the properties that have set themselves up originally as a residential, you know, there are some lovely big houses in Dunedin. And I mean, I know a lot of them go for students, that's a different matter altogether. But those that have been split up into individual units like the first property I mentioned, 526 George Street. You know, it's got 14 bedrooms, but it's still classed as a house. How does that work? You know, it's not really fair. I've got a motel with eight bedrooms, I'm really small. I'm boutique, I'm out on the peninsula and our occupancy is 45% a year. And my rates represent 5% of my turnover. So, you know, it's a lot. I'd love to have a rate rebate for the months I don't have anybody like between now and September, but it's not going to happen, you know. So it isn't really fair. A lot of the moteliers are running very big operations and we do have a lot of regulations imposed on us, which we're happy to see through because it's for the safety of the tourist and for the, you know, the safety of the operator. But these people are just, they're flying under the radar, it's just unfair. And it's, at the end of the day, you know, it's a rating issue as well. Why should they not be paying their contribution to the city for the money that they're bringing in?
Councillor Gary.
Thank you for coming in, Mrs. Rhodes. I found it really informative. I have a couple of questions. And I was interested to hear you say that it wasn't the occupier with one bedroom that you were interested in, it was the bigger operations. Are you aware that if somebody's listed on, for example, Airbnb, they have to provide information around some health and safety? Obviously not at a level like a motel, but around fire extinguishers and so forth? Are you aware of that?
That they have to fulfil some criteria? I don't know that the criteria is very big.
But there is a criteria nonetheless.
Are you telling me there is?
I believe there is.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, I was just wondering if you were...
Well, we registered two of our rooms on Airbnb just to see what would happen. And it all seemed fairly flimsy. Not flimsy, that's the wrong word, it seemed fairly, it's a very easy process to do. There doesn't seem to be, there's no check-up on it, there's no way of, you know, backing up the quality of what's being sold. So, and it does vary hugely. I've had guests who've complained to me about Airbnbs they've stayed in around the country. And, you know, it's just not been up to muster and they're paying, you know, you say, well, what are you paying? Some of them have paid $70 a night, some have paid $180 a night.
My second question is around the occupancy rates at your members' motels over the past visitor season. Are you able to share that with us?
Yes, it's around 80%.
80%, yeah. And how did that compare with the previous year?
I think it's fairly level at the moment. It does depend so much on what's happening. Dear old Ed Sheeran's done a lot for us. But actually it's come in the holiday season time for us anyway. So, you know, but we'd like these things to happen in June, July and August, please.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Hawkins.
Thank you, and thank you for your presentation and I have some sympathy for the argument. I'm trying to find a consistency here though and I'm interested in how you see it as being different if a property investor buys a property, splits all the rooms up and rents them out individually for 12 months at a time, which is incredibly common. And someone buying an investment property and splitting the rooms up and renting them out for 12 days at a time. In terms of the effects on the city, how is that fundamentally different? Or should all of the student rental sector be charged commercial rates as well, given that that's essentially the same?
Yes, I don't know how student properties are rated, whether individual studios are rated as individual residences. Or whether the whole building is rated as a commercial building. But I think the point is that if you've got a house that's being charged $2,000 or $3,000 a year, rates has then split itself up into half a dozen letting bedrooms. It's then earning, you know, it's earning a power is quite massive actually compared to just being a residential house. And they haven't had to comply with anything. So they don't have any costs against their income and they aren't having to meet any kind of, you know, reasonable quality.
And the current situation is that they're being rated as a single residence regardless of whether it's split up into individual studio rooms for rent or not. But council is between now and next year's long-term plan process currently reviewing how we rate studio rooms. And would it be your contention that as part of that exercise, it might be worth considering the sharing economy more broadly in terms of how people are operating their residences for commercial operations?
Yeah, absolutely. And I think the, you know, the Dunedin city plan would be another, you know, thing that we would like to contribute to really. Because clearly that's very much in our interest and very much to the point that it should be reviewed. Thank you.
Further questions councillors? Mrs. Rhodes, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And as councillor Hawkins said, it is our intention to examine this issue with a view to addressing or finding what our options are with a view to addressing the issues. Okay, our next submitter is Rhys Owen, who wishes to address the meeting concerning freedom camping. Rhys? Welcome Rhys. The next five minutes to yours, so go for it.
Thank you. So I'm going to talk about the freedom camping problem Dunedin has and I'm going to offer some solutions as well. So my name is Rhys Owen, I live in Warrington, next to the reserve and I've lived there for 10 years. The bylaw review document that's been put forward, in my view, is not ready for public consultation. It lacks detail and does not address the problems. What the bylaw review document doesn't say, and what I want to know is, exactly how many freedom campers will the revised bylaw allow to park overnight in Warrington? And therefore, how much of the grass recreational reserve does council plan to turn into a car park? For public consultation, council should make this clear. The council proposed to turn a section of Warrington's only grass recreational reserve into a gravel or asphalt car park. Council should provide dimensions and location and confirm whether it will be gravel or asphalt. How much of the reserve will be off-limits to vehicles and campers? And how much of the reserve will be exclusively for community and visitor recreational use? When the designated car park is full, how will council deal with overflow? Will there be late-night enforcement and where will overflow go? Because council staff have rejected all additional proposed sites local to Warrington. I know from my own experience, having freedom camped around the North Island last year, that freedom camp areas should be limited to a maximum of 10 vehicles per night and per site. This way, they are discreet and campers do not become a public nuisance. This bylaw review document proposes five industrial-sized car parks. But what the city actually needs is 20, 30 or 40 very small areas with at least five, sorry, with at most five or 10 vehicles per site. If other suburbs of Dunedin do not support opening new sites, council has to consider restricting freedom camping to self-contained vehicles only. This has to be Plan B, no toilet, no freedom camping. In summary, we need to have a limit on vehicles at Warrington, I suggest 10 vehicles per night. Dunedin city as a whole has to decide whether there is sufficient economic benefit and community support to continue to create new areas and provide facilities for campers without onboard toilets. If Dunedin is to continue with its current policy, it needs to open enough sites to meet demand. And we need an advisory committee to progress this problem toward an acceptable solution. Thank you.
Questions councillors? Councillor Van der Wiss.
Thank you very much and thank you very much for your positive suggestions about sites where we already have toilets where freedom camping could be made available. Very helpful, thank you. Regarding the detail, you've suggested that we should have no freedom camping unless there's a toilet onboard. Would you consider one of those little cassette toilets that you can bang in any station wagon or any car in fact? Would you consider that to be a toilet onboard? Or, I mean, the problem for us is where do we draw the line?
I totally understand and I understand that's a staff concern as well as if you do go to the, if you do restrict it to self-contained only, there will be an element of the tourism industry that will still want to freedom camp and hide out in places. So that's why I've said that's got to be Plan B. And the purpose that that would be Plan B is just to restrict numbers. So the problem at Warrington is just too many freedom campers.
So you're not actually really stuck on the idea of no freedom camping without a toilet? What you would like to see is better use of the toilets we've got at a lot more sites. We were told an email this morning, for instance, that Taronga has 38 sites and I don't think they get as many tourists as us. So you think that by having more sites and using a lot of the existing DCC toilets, we could overcome a lot of the problems that Warrington's now facing?
Yes. On the last page of that handout that I gave you, I've just put forward that the City Council has 55 toilet blocks. Not all of them would be acceptable places to have people camping near. But it just gives you an idea that if we had five car parks allocated near them and they were available for freedom camping, say between 6pm and 8am, then straight away, I can't remember the number off the top of my head, but straight away we can cater for a huge number of freedom campers. And by being in a very small number of vehicles, nobody will notice them. It's only when you get up to 20 vehicles or 30 vehicles that they become noticeable. If you just have two or three in each area spread over the city, then the problem's solved.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Steadman. Thank you Rhys. Just in your experience at Warrington and having seen all these cars, how long do some of these people actually stay situated in one spot?
So last summer, I understood there was supposed to be some enforcement, but I've actually got some videos. I interviewed some of the freedom campers and I put it on YouTube. So in particular, there was two German chaps who were living in Warrington Reserve for four months. And they were working for Crown Rental in town. And they were saving up their money, they were spending nothing in town. And their whole purpose was to save up money so that when they left New Zealand, they were going to Hawaii and they needed money, spending money in Hawaii. So Dunedin was just a stopgap to save up some money. They were living there for four months, one sleeping in a hatchback and one sleeping in a little pup tent.
Councillor O'Malley.
Thanks Rhys for your presentation and I think you brought up some very valid points here. I've been talking to various colleagues over the last four or five days as this was coming up to council. And one of the things that got raised today actually was that in addition to what the council can do, there's a lot of private people who are actually quite willing to take on freedom campers at their properties. Yet we didn't have a mechanism in the current way we're approaching this to identify or incorporate those people into our plan. And you called for potentially an advisory committee to help towards a formulating of policy which would be more effective. So I guess in support of that idea, would you like to see something along the lines of, obviously there would want to be staff there and then councillors and then the community boards and then probably the camping sites that had already got a commercial stake in this game, as well as various members of the community that are affected by it, would that be an effective kind of group?
My view on most things is that the public sector should give problems to the private sector as often as possible. And in this case, I've considered that there are options, I haven't brought them forward, but this, as an example, I understand the council spent tens of thousands of dollars on facilities at Warrington this last summer. That's tens and thousands of dollars of ratepayer money. And the campgrounds, which are all locally owned by Dunedin residents, have lost out on people staying at their campgrounds. So totally the campground should be part of a discussion on a solution. And there's so many options, but one option I've thought about is, well, couldn't we subsidise the campgrounds to take these people? And say campgrounds charge them just $2 a night to park there. Maybe they asphalt out at a confined car park, I don't know, there's lots of options, but, you know, the council could give them rates, rebates to take these people. There's all sorts of options, but definitely the locally owned campground should be part of the discussion on a solution.
So just sort of to clarify, I guess where I'm heading with this is you've come up with some good ideas again. And if we were all in the same room at the same time, because some of these are also constrained by the Freedom Camping Act, what we can and can't do in terms of charges and the like. If everybody's there and able to voice their view at the same time, I suspect we might get through this a bit faster than the process we're doing right now. I do believe everybody's acting in good faith, but it seems to be acting, it's moving along. I certainly know when we have the community board meetings at Warrington, there's only one thing on the debate. And certainly Warrington has received the brunt of this policy as it stands and there has to be something to do to give you guys relief.
Totally agree, definitely a workshop or a group where everybody gets together and thrashes it out is definitely the most efficient way of dealing with that, definitely.
Councillor Gary.
Rhys, thank you for coming along and voicing your opinions and good ideas. Having been through this on the peninsula with the McCandrie Bay situation, I feel like I'm going to ask this question from a point of some knowledge and having seen the vitriol that sometimes occurs. having seen the vitriol that sometimes occurs and the opposition to freedom campers. I have a question for you around your definition, or your, if you were asked to describe a freedom camper, who would it be? And I thought it was very interesting that you picked on a particular example, which I would suggest was in the minority. So I was interested if in your definition or your ideal view of what a freedom camper would typically be, would you consider the economic benefit of those who come out to New Zealand and to Dunedin to suss it out as a destination to come and live? And do, we have many stories of that. Would that be part of your picture of a freedom camper, or is it simply around budget travellers?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I have asked around, but it's very difficult to know what these people will do in twenty or forty years' time. I know from my own personal experience, when I've gone overseas, I, you know, I've gone through Southeast Asia and I've gone to Europe, and often, once I've travelled to one place, I often don't go back because there's so many places in the world to travel to and see. If I was twenty-five years old, I came to New Zealand, I would say I'd tick that box, and then I'd go to Australia and tick that box, I'd go to South America and all the places. So I can't say, but, you know, there's a very good chance these people aren't all coming back to live in New Zealand.
Would you be surprised to learn that somehow?
I wouldn't be surprised, no, no. It's a beautiful place to live. People live there for a reason.
Any further questions, councillors?
Thank you all very much.
Our next submitter is Geraldine Tate of the Waikato Coast Community Board. Welcome, Geraldine. Speaking on the same subject?
Possibly not.
Possibly not.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you today. The Waikato Coast Community Board has a very high level of interest in both the beaches and reserves bylaw and the proposed special consultative process in relation to freedom camping. But I've just been informed today that the freedom camping section has been withdrawn from your agenda and that we appear to have a choice of talking to you today, which I would really like to do because some of what the previous speaker has engaged you with, I completely disagree with, and I would love to get into a bit of a sparring match, especially as we have your attention. But that may not be wise. So my original, although I apparently was booked in to speak about freedom camping, I was under the illusion I was here to speak about also about the beaches and reserves bylaws. So I'll use the message of amounts of stuff for control and just talk to you about that for a few minutes, if that's all right. Firstly, I'd like to thank staff for their work on the revised bylaw. We are very pleased to see a greater emphasis on the rights of beach and reserve users to enjoy passive recreation and a higher level of protection it provides for our local wildlife and birds. We're also pleased that Warrington has been added to the official list of beaches where horses are permitted. So basically, it's such a good news story. Personally, I'm a member of the Warrington Reserve Group, which is a tiny little voluntary group that's been operating in Warrington for about sixteen years, possibly longer than that. And our main aim throughout that whole time has been education, information, and trying to enhance and protect the local wildlife. And we've done that through a number of ways. We also have tried to improve the facilities for humans in our areas, so things like toilets and stuff and children's playgrounds have come into our, the types of activities we get up to. But our main concern has been the main impact on wildlife, and the main thing that a lot of humans that go to the beach and use the reserves don't like is vehicles on the beach and inappropriate control of dogs. I mean, I've been a dog owner and I know that dogs love to go to the beach, but a lot of people are completely ignorant about what wildlife we have and what effect dogs have. And I have dear friends that I go to the beach with and don't think that their job chasing seagulls down the beach is a problem. Well, it is an unacceptable behaviour, and we need to have a culture of change. When you want change, there's three methods of creating change. One is a cultural change, an attitude change, where people embrace something and say, yes, we'll wear safety belts, we won't drink and drive, we'll protect our children with certain measures. So we need a culture change, and that's what our group has been trying to do and what the community board has also endorsed. But sometimes you also need legislation because cultural change can't happen on its own. So this legislation is absolutely light years of anything we've seen before, and it's fantastic. And then you need enforcement, and I think staff are aware of that, and that will be the problem. I think when this hits the newspapers, there will be a lot of people will be very upset who feel it's their goddamn given right to drive down that jolly beach. Well, I think our shit city should say, no, it isn't. And no, we've got too much special stuff here, and from an economic point of view and from an environmental point of view, we need to protect it. I do have one little problem. When I read the bylaw as it's been presented to you to endorse, unfortunately, Warrington has not been given the level of protection it should have. Warrington has special, part of Warrington beyond the Breakthrough, which is about two-thirds of the way down, has an area where dogs are not permitted to go. Actually, no one knows this and most people ignore it. And also, in your own June's Management Plan 2010, there's a section which says this is a very important area and we would like to have higher protection. That document five years ago, which was based on reports given to council by wildlands and by Derek Onley, ornithologists, which were looking at the ecosystem out there, said we would like to get vehicles off beaches. We realize there needs to be more information and education of the public. So that document was a forerunner to what you're achieving here. But Warrington should have been included as one of the special ecological areas. Now, when I saw the document you've got before you, I approached staff and said, there's been an omission here. And they weren't aware of the dog bylaw. I don't know whether they were aware of the June's bylaw. I spent a day searching your council documents, including the biodiversity strategy, and I think all of them endorse what I'm saying is that Warrington... Now, it will be achieved by you saying no vehicles allowed on beaches, and it will be achieved by the education and information that's going to have to follow up this bylaw. But one little omission is the sand carts or whatever you call them. Now, I see them as almost worse than a car travelling down the beach because they travel at enormous speeds and they're probably, I've never tried to drive one, but I suspect they're damn difficult to control. And they, there is one recreational user presently, who knows, you know, these trends, that things can suddenly become very popular, like the kites that you see at Portsmouth Drive out on the ocean there. Suddenly, we could have five or six people coming out in a weekend and using them. Currentness by now is not going to prevent those using that section of the beach. I find that very scary because they'll drive right through those areas where the godwits and the oystercatchers and the dotters are nesting during high tide. And we have more and more sea lions visiting our beach, including a female that is coming there to have her puppy for years. Second year she's, or third year she's turned up, and successfully managed to breed despite freedom campers, she did it. And there are other sea lions, elephant seals, and leopard seals that occasionally visit, along with yelloway penguins that come to Malta and other occasional visitors. These animals are more vulnerable to the things like the likes of a wind cart than your usual seagulls or whatever you might see more commonly at the beach. So I don't know, it may be too late to add an addendum to what you're already hopefully going to look kindly on today, but I just ask that Warrington should have been included. It's in your current plans and strategies, and I ask that you look at it. And the main reason is, this is an opportunity to say, these are the really special places that DCC controls around our coast, and we do want that light shone on that far end of our spit and to say, this is a special area because that's the important education that follows the bylaw. So as I say, the dog control bylaw hasn't been effective because it doesn't have the right information going out to dog owners or much follow-up enforcement. So it's a wonderful opportunity, and I just hope we can get the icing on the cake in relation to Warrington.
Questions, councillors? councillor O'Malley?
So first, basically, to summarize, what you're really making sure is we want to ship and get that Warrington, that Endo Warrington Beach, added on to the list of special places. And you otherwise think, though, that it's a great bylaw?
councillor Wilson?
Thanks, Geraldine. One thing that's, a number of times come up to my attention in the last few weeks, and something that doesn't have a place in the RMA, or in fact, within council, is the Esetaago Taipuri management area, which I, does that include the Warrington?
Yes, it does.
You were talking about?
Yes, it does.
So if we were doing justice to that, would this area have been included? Because that extends right up the beach, doesn't it, that management area?
Yeah, I can't actually answer that question, Kate. I guess any protection that is put in and acknowledges an area special for cultural, Kamauna, environmental reasons is a good news story as far as we're concerned. So your acknowledgement of the Taipuri and what it does is going to... I mean, most local people are aware of it, but maybe not all. And they do have special rules around shellfish gathering and all sorts of other things in that area, which does help enforce that message too.
My understanding is it's not only that they have rule-making ability?
That's right.
Okay, so we should be considering or consulting with them, yeah, and perhaps that's something we should have done in that process?
Yes, I submitted to the process as an individual, and the community board submitted, but I know that doc was consulted and they should have known that this Endo Warrington Beach was a special place. I don't know what they were sleeping on the day. But certainly, the Taipuri should be involved in this type of consultation when you're talking about the coast. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Our next submitters are Sarah Niedis and Morris Printigas from the Moazkill Titi Community Board, who wish to speak to us about freedom camping. Welcome. Could have given you piggyback, Morris. Up, Sarah, well, Morris. Right, you have the next five minutes to regale us. All yours.
Your worship, elected members. My issue, and I'm sure that Sarah, our chairman, joins, must I, that I would like to address today is the inane proposal to provide infrastructural facilities for freedom campers, who, in my view, should be classified along with all other noxious pests. Freedom campers desecrate our wilderness areas while contributing nothing in return. The issue, my focus, and I'm sure our community board members join with me, but we haven't had the chance to have the collective vote. And I'll come to that in a moment. My focus today is specifically on a staff proposal to dispoil a beautiful stream lay-by adjacent to Puddle Alley and Wengatuie by designating that beautiful spot as a spot for freedom campers to encamp. This is a beautiful summer picnic spot where especially little children can safely frolic in the stream's shallow waters, safe from the litter, the stench, and the boorish behaviour that attends the practice of freedom camping. There is a convention, and I know it well, I was an elected member for some twenty-four years. There is a convention that elected members should not be critical of staff. But that convention must cut both ways. Elected members, in this case, were invited to an onsite discussion with staff at this Puddle Alley site where it was apparent that there was little appetite for the proposal to turn this site into a free camping site. That said, it is my understanding that our chairman, our very, our very good chairman on our left, Sarah, quite properly entered the subject as a formal agenda item at the following community board meeting in order that that recommendation to council could be formalized. Further to this, it is my understanding that our chairman... I've got an off-color comment that I must modify. That our chairman was taken out by staff and was made to remove that that item from the, from the... I'm just having a little bit of difficulty modifying my script here at the same time telling the truth.
I understand your problem.
There was a modification, there was a modification to the agenda that wasn't fair in my view, or certainly wasn't fair to our chairman. And in consequence, the elected members were denied the opportunity of ever discussing this matter. The next thing the elected members knew was that the proposal appeared in today's document for you people to consider. That is not the pathway that reasonable behaviour should have generated. We've not heard from, we've not heard by way of, by way of reason, we've not heard from staff the consideration that council, this consideration, that council own their own campground in Moazkill, which they lease to a tenant who in turn pays significant property rates on those grounds. How perverse is it then that council consider using his rates, his rates along with others, to capitalize facilities for freedom campers to use free of charge? How perverse is that? But the madness and the sadness grows. No more than two kilometres away, the very civic-minded Ataga Tharibeb Racing Club own their property and open their property to counter civic exercises as from walking groups, police training, school cross countries, et cetera, along with capital investment and camping infrastructure, which includes a waste dump station. The last time I looked at the Ataga Racing Club was paying property rates in excess of ten thousand dollars annually. And what does, if you will, a couple of staff members have the gall to propose that we build a facility at Puddle Alley, two kilometres away, that competes with that which the Ataga Racing Club already provides, but charge it to the racing club rate account along with everybody else's? but charge it to the racing club rate account along with everybody else's? Arrest my face.
Right, your five minutes is up and I'm going to ask the questions, but I'm going to point out that you took the opportunity that was afforded you to speak on the freedom camping issue to criticise staff knowing that they weren't going to have an opportunity to respond. So I'm going to restrict questions to the question of freedom camping and not about staff because I find that offensive. And frankly, you're advised. So if there are any questions on freedom camping, I welcome them, but I will not allow questions on the other ramblings of the submitter. Councillor Gary?
I have to say, I find the equating freedom campers with noxious weeds extremely offensive. My own daughter's about to go camping in another part of the world, I'd be horrified if she was described in that way. But the question I have is around my understanding of Puddle Alley being a popular destination for local people as well as visitors. And I'm going to direct this question to Sarah, in fact. Would the provision of toilets at public, at Puddle Alley be an asset to local people as well as visitors?
The addition of toilets at Puddle Alley would definitely be an asset to the local population and part of what I was hoping to have the opportunity to summarise and to take on board aspects of Maurice's. I was hoping to summarise on behalf of the board, but we have run out of time. I had to ask councillors to consider that if the community board had come to you one month ago at annual plan hearings time and asked for this infrastructure, for additional toilets and rubbish facilities to be provided at Puddle Alley for local ratepayers of Moskew, would you have supported $100,000 expenditure for that infrastructure for locals? Does that answer your question?
Well, it was a question to answer the question, but I'm assuming from that, Sarah, that you mean that it would be useful to have that facility?
We would love that facility for the look of, for the use of locals. Yep, yes, absolutely, win one.
It's just probably to either of you, really. If we don't provide facilities for 200 vehicles entering the city, do you want them to park outside your house? Because I believe that that, the failure to provide places for them to park was only going to result in a dispersal and therefore it'll just come back to where we were five years ago.
The view of the board is non-self-contained freedom campers is where the problem lies. And we, Maurice hasn't mentioned non-self-contained freedom campers in his speech today, but the freedom camp, we welcome visitors to our city, it's a beautiful city, of course, people from all around the world want to come. The line needs to be drawn between non-self-contained and contained freedom campers is what we believe. And again, as councillor Vandevus raised, contained as in having a toilet in the back of a station wagon, I'm not sure of where that line is drawn, but non-self-contained, we don't believe ratepayers should have, be having to put and pay for infrastructure for people that are not willing to pay for facilities such as campgrounds or areas which have facilities or for self-contained facilities. So the differentiation is differently between non-self-contained and contained.
Councillor Elder?
I was just going to ask, if there were a lot more sites as proposed in the first proposal and there were, say, a limit on the number of people allowed in each site, do you think that would assist issues that are coming up?
Could you say it again, please?
If there were more sites around In Eden that people were able to use and there was a limit in the number of people being allowed at certain sites, so once it got to, say, it depends on the site, a certain number, that would be the limit for that site. If there was limited numbers, do you see that as solving the problem or?
Limited numbers of non-self-contained?
Yes.
That's where I think the blur occurs. So you can, you say, you're saying as a city that they are welcome, but then, you know, so then they come and they think they might park here or no, and they've got the apps that show where they are able to park and things. I, we don't, the board has expressed concern that we don't really understand where the country and the city is coming from as far as allowing people to live in station wagons while they're travelling around New Zealand. That's the concern we have. Yes, it means people can stay for two months rather than one month perhaps if they were having to pay a little bit more and stay in campgrounds or use a self-contained mobile home. There, where you've got that unsucentee about, you know, and that's, well, I guess then you've made the decision, you're saying non-self-contained are welcome and we're spreading them out. And that's something for council to decide, isn't it? We, we as a board, the board has indicated that they are not in support of non-self-contained.
Thank you.
No further questions, thank you.
Am I able to add that?
You have your five minutes and Maurice used it. Now, our next submitter is Karen Anderson, who wishes to address us about the reserves and beaches by law. Welcome Karen. Next five minutes are yours, so five minutes.
Thank you, sir. I'm, can you hear me television people last time you had problems? That's terrible. Thank you, um, uh, thank you, sir. Hopefully, I may in fact be able to avoid taking five minutes, so fingers crossed, he smiles. I'm here about the reserves and beaches by law as his worship has said. There's some great things in there, thank you. I have some, always had concerns about process and content, but there are some great things in there, in there. However, I'm only one person and I can only focus on one issue. I'm here about the confining myself to the issues relating to dogs. Now, I know that you're not considering dogs today, but what you are signing off on is the completion of a review process that took submissions, this microphone is horrible, that took, that took submissions or that proposes to take the submissions and data from the review process and take them forward and use them as the base for the dog control review that we will know is occurring later on this year. And that's where my concern lies. So I'm here to ask you to just give consideration as you close off this reserve and by law review process about how you use those submissions going forward. And here's the reason. It is that the proposal documentation included the sentence we, in relation to the submissions called for about dogs. Try and hold it up here so I can hold my head still. We allow dogs on leash on a path within a reserve, but ban them from the reserve on either side of the path. Now, a quick inspection of any of the 17 maps tells you that's not correct. I've also tested that sentence against any possible definition of reserve. The big four, gazetted, scenic, scientific, local government purpose reserves, reserves as in a thing that has the name, reserve. It's our what, reserve under the 2005 by law, under the proposal that we're now looking at. It doesn't work, it's not correct. So if you've called for submissions on the basis of a statement that isn't correct, those submissions become tainted. If you use them as the basis of the review of the dog control, then we taint that process too. I really don't want to be part of, to encourage you to reflect on something that results in the decision that we lose the submissions. I don't know if you read all of the submissions for the reserves and beach about review. There's some really great material on there, particularly in terms of multi-use issues around some of our vulnerable or high, highly contested areas or high density areas. I don't want to lose them. It's not my decision, I wouldn't like to see them lost. But I'm asking you, before you sign off, to reflect on how you are going to, on the role that those submissions will play going forward to make sure that we don't taint the dog control re-review and risk invalidating it because of the incorrect information included in this proposal. I don't know what that timing is, sir, but that's me.
That's, that's it, thank you. Questions councillors? Questions? There are none, but thank you for bringing that to our attention and we will take that into consideration.
Thank you very much, sir.
Right, our next submitter is Paul Goley, who wishes to speak about cameras in Northern Eden. Welcome, Paul.
I just want to welcome us in reflection of our coat of arms, which acknowledges both new migrants and Tanga Fenua. And I do that because currently I chair the Dunedin Multi-ethnic Council. Apparently I'm a life member of the University Student Association. And I would hate to think that there was anybody here that has a great ego with me, I'd be devastated. Having said that, the reason I wanted to speak to the cameras is that we only found out that there were going to be cameras put into the public space because of the cheeky student magazine that happened to be at a meeting, which was behind closed doors, where the student association executive was being briefed that the cameras were going to be put ahead. They were told that they couldn't have been briefed earlier because the funding had to be put in place and the work had to be done, so then the consultation process could happen. But I can just reflect on the idea of cameras being used as a way of dissuading bad behaviour or stopping violent behaviour. Clearly they're good for gathering information, clearly they're good for gathering evidence when the cameras are of a quality to actually be able to have facial recognition. However, if I also happened to be a person that was wanting to be recruited for a gang or thought that I wanted some fame on TV by getting on Police Ten, or whatever the programme is called, actually attacking somebody in front of a camera would be one way to ensure that that was going to happen. If cameras were so good, then there would be no longer any violence in the octagon where we are now. I'm not, as was reported on TV 39, protesting against the cameras. In fact, I can argue a case for cameras. What I am concerned about is the lack of consultation. What I'm really concerned about was that when I ran a number of councillors, they hadn't heard about the process. They were unaware of what was happening in our town. And despite them being called a city, I think many of us still consider ourselves a large village, a town. And we also consider our university as our university and not simply something that's provided for by the rest of the country that some of our people are allowed to be lucky enough to go to. We actually get to host our university. It was our city that provided the land, it's our city that provided the university with its coat of arms that says, "Dare to be wise." And it also happened to pay for the student association to go to the Lord of Loans and get its coat of arms that says that we dare. And at the moment, for many of us, we feel that our university has been becoming a functionary, if you like, becoming another factory. And in fact, as more and more of its workers are outsourced, we might look forward to a time when it starts to behave like a company called Cadres, which isn't actually Cadres, but some other company, and then we discover that they want to leave when they think that they should. I heard an earlier speaker address you and say that perhaps a university providers of accommodation should be being charged as any other commercial providers. Or some of my constituents might be annoyed if I was to say that I definitely think it's wise that council considers that in looking at how we want to see our university place. Much of my work is working with internationals and locals, and at the moment, they come here because of the quality of our education. They are beginning to go home saying that we are more interested in their money than we are in their education. I have third-year students who are getting A's that can't explain their work because they write the script of SA's to ensure that they remain there and can keep their entitlements, their entitlement being to be in debt. So if I can quickly summarise this, I would like to congratulate you on the work that's being done, sorry, that's been done both in Castle Street, where my old college is selling, and also in Hyde Street, where Lance Barwood, ex-student, sorry, ex superintendent of police, is to be horrified every time another couch is burned down. Are the couches being stopped because of fear of being caught on a CCTV? I don't think so. Are they being stopped because people took the time to go and visit them? Yes, indeed it has. And moreover, because this council decided that instead of having the road as the biggest rubbish pit in this town, it suddenly repaved it and it actually is a nice place to walk along. I would suggest that some other earlier speakers, we're talking about a cultural shift. We have to stop sending a message out that our university is great for drinking surgical ethanol, firing skyrockets and burning couches, that in fact it is a university of higher learning when anybody and everybody is encouraged, and that Atago Dunedin in fact has a town and gown relationship, and that the city is looking after our university area and not some private organisation intent on some warfare, poor greed and compliance by some camera. Thank you, Paul.
Paul, you have to take questions. If there are any, but I'm also aware that you're pressed for time. Councillor O'Malley?
Quick one. It's very hard to get hold of surgical ethanol these days. The issue I think you're raising is, is the gap, the pressure between governance and, and basically doing the job. And do you believe that potentially there should have had a more of a governance role in it in terms of there should have been a request going out before the cameras to go up as to whether we were concerned one way or the other? In other words, I don't think you're coming here to talk about whether you think cameras are good or bad, but the process is that?
The process is why I wanted to come here and that factors the case. I went to a forum that suddenly got organised by the university on campus and there were two people there, there was the chief officer of finances and also the proctor. The question I put to the proctor was, before you started on this road to cameras, did you consider what was the cause of the problem, why these people were coming into the area and what was happening? He said, "No." Clearly I wouldn't go to a doctor who didn't know what the problem was before he gave me a description. The second question I put to the university was, had there been any consultation with the, with council? Why were, why was it possible that I could speak to councillors who hadn't heard about it? And he said, "Well, of course, we spoke to staff and we did speak to one councillor." And I pressed him and said, "Given that the councillor would be an elected officer, could you tell me who it was?" And he said, "Well, actually, they sit on a number of committees and he listed them and admitted that they also had met in February." And I said, "Again, given that this person's publicly elected and they balance it who they are and what they do, can you give me a name?" And he said, "Well, actually, I don't know." This is a great concern. I, I, there are a number of people who would like to be able to have feedback. I, I, there are a number of people who would like to be able to have feedback with you as our councillors, and these cameras ought to go up in public places, and it just makes sense that you would be involved and in charge of making those decisions. And it would also be good to think that before we go spend one and a half million dollars of money on there, we might consider doing something really crazy like having people back in the university. Imagine that, if we were to have staff, a student disordered staff who might say to students, "Ngorli, you've spoken long enough, we've heard you, please now go away."
Is that an invitation?
There is one little co-debut if I could put to you. As a fundraiser, we are organising a debate between the university and the student association, or the student body, the university taking the side we dare to be wise, and the student association taking the side that we dare. I've spoken to young professor Flynn who has agreed to be the third speaker, I've spoken to the dean of law who is somewhat surprised that we were bumped, but I think we'd be happy to be the second speaker, and I'm suggesting that our vice-chancellor should be the first speaker, and if she is unavailable, I'd clearly like to speak and I would be quite happy to be there in her place. My question to you, if I could have a show of hands, would council be happy if this was a public debate as a fundraiser for our mayor to be the chair? If you could raise your hand. I also take that as an indication that you also have to turn up media traducers.
From now on, Paul, you will ask my division before you come in.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul.